Good morning, everyone, and welcome to the Mesa City Council Study Session for June the 14th. Is Mr. Heredia phoning in, do we know? I haven't heard, okay. We'll await the arrival of Mr. Heredia. And in the meantime, we'll proceed. The first item on our agenda is to review the items on the June 18th regular council meeting agenda, so please refer to that document. Also, it's, we need to point out that on our Monday calendar, we are also having a special council meeting for the purpose of putting the home rule issue on the ballot. Per state law, that has to be done in a special council meeting, is that correct, Mr. Smith?
[inaudible]
Right, so let's talk about that. I know the special council meeting is agendized for 5:50, and the regular council meeting is agendized for 5:45. Do we need to begin this? Give us some direction, Mr. Smith.
Mayor and council, I think that we need to start the special at 5:50, so what we'll do is we'll just delay the regular council meeting by a couple of minutes. We'll start at 5:50 with the special council meeting. I think it'll take, I think, a few minutes, and then we'll do the regular council meeting right after.
Okay, so we're not legally required to start this, the formal meeting, prior to the special meeting?
No, we can delay the regular meeting till afterwards.
Okay, great. So, council, please refer to the agenda for the regular council meeting. First few items are liquor license applications, followed by purchasing contracts, Agenda Item 4. Yes?
And this is more for Mr. Brady and Ms. Kent. And I mentioned it to Mark Hirschberg, and I had the conversation a while ago, on 4B. When I saw the price of $42,000 for four feet of pipe, I freaked out a little bit. And when I went to read the council report, there was not a whole lot of supporting information in there to tell me why it would cost $42,000 to put in 400 feet of one-inch steel pipe. So, just in the future, because it turns out there was a lot more to it than just putting in 42,000 feet of pipe, it was, they had to do some core drilling and so forth. So, in the future, on the council reports, can we make sure that we're adding those additional costs on there? It makes it clear, I think, for council, when they see something like that, that they understand that there was a lot of work that went into it.
Absolutely. Yeah, we will do. We will do better. Thank you.
So, it's okay to stay on consent?
Yeah, well, it's already been paid, so we're good.
All right. So, it stays on consent?
Yeah. The work's been done.
Okay, great. Any other questions relating to Agenda Item 4? Five is various resolutions. And six is introducing ordinances for public hearing.
Mayor, on Item 6E, which is the zoning case at Alma School and Southern, we got a request yesterday from the applicant to continue this to your August 20th meeting.
I'm sorry, can you say that again?
The applicant has requested continuance to the August 20th meeting.
Okay, great. So, that's 6E?
6E, it's the case at Southern Alma School, C O N 18 00066.
Okay, so will we amend what's on the consent agenda to continue until?
August 20th.
August 20th, okay.
Mayor?
Yes?
Also, Item 4J is going to be removed from the agenda.
All right, Item 4J, having to do with refuse trucks, is just going to be deleted from the agenda?
For now, yeah.
Okay. All right. Anything else on Agenda Item 6? Currently, what's probably worth noting, we had a zoning case involving Boeing and housing development that is, that's on, is that on our consent agenda?
It's on. Mayor, yes, it's not on consent because we have a general plan change that requires a public hearing.
Thank you.
That's just reason for not being on consent.
Okay.
Item 9 on the agenda.
So, that would be Item 9A, correct? 9A and 9B?
Clear to 9...
And C and D and E.
We have an annexation, the comparable zoning, general plan change, rezoning, all together.
All of these items related to the one subdivision, correct? I just wanted to, so that'll be off the consent, obviously, because we have to do the public hearing related to the general plan amendment. But I just wanted to compliment both the applicant and the industry. They worked together over the course of many months, and at times, I think it was, people weren't optimistic that they were going to reach a resolution of this. So, I just want to thank them for sticking with this and for the innovative approach to this that resolved the conflict. So, again, Items Not on Consent Agenda is that zoning case that requires multiple public hearings, having to do with a minor general plan amendment. Anything else, gentlemen, that you'd like to have off the consent agenda? All right. Hearing none. The next item on the agenda for this meeting is to hear a presentation and discuss the City of Mesa Water Shortage Management Plan. Welcome, gentlemen.
Good morning, Mayor and council. I'm Jake West, Water Resources Director. With me today is Brian Draper, our Water Resources Advisor, who manages all our water commodities. Back in early April, we brought this presentation to the SAT Committee, Sustainability and Transportation, and they recommended that we bring it here to council for adoption, so that's why we're here this morning. So, we're seeking approval of adoption of the water shortage plan, and so I'll have Brian just go through his presentation real quickly.
Mayor, council, thank you for this opportunity. Moving into what is the water shortage plan, the previous two plans that the city has really focused on drought, and the shortage team came together, and really, there's a lot of other scenarios that can affect our ability to meet customers' demand outside of drought. And you can see a short list here, but it's not all-inclusive, but you can have infrastructure failures such as canal breaks, plant shutdowns, as well as outages. In past, we have had an energy outage at the Brown Road Water Treatment Plan. If you recall, in 2011, we had the substation fire, and we were unable to meet deliveries for a short period of time, as well as chemical outages due to Hurricane Harvey in Texas. We lost a very valuable chemical and came very close to losing our ability to treat water in that account. Goals of the plan, they're listed here. They're not meant to be in priority as listed, but just really to reflect that the plan is always being reviewed. We're always looking to make sure that we have the ability to meet demands. Looking at the water service area, we wanted to call out, really to make council aware that there's different water sources. We have the city zone, which is really on project waters that we receive from SRP, and then we have the eastern zones, which receive surface water from Colorado River through the CAP canal. And then, of course, throughout the city, we do have wells that supplement during peak demands. And the next slide kind of reflects how we break that up now into zones. Thankfully, as of June, we have the Signal Butte Water Treatment Plant, so now we're able to meet the needs of the southern zone. The Brown Road Plant meets the eastern zones, as you see reflected. And then, the city zones is met by the Valvista Water Treatment Plant, and these collectively together meet demands using surface water. How the supplies measure up, looking at last year's supplies, 26% were met by Salt River Project. Colorado River was 55%, and 19% was met by groundwater wells. Just wanted to bring out that the underlying right for us to really supply these waters is through the Assured Water Supply Program, ADWR, which gives us a designation of 100-year water supply for our customers to meet future demand.
Excuse me, I have a quick question about this slide.
Yes, sir.
I understand part of the reasoning behind the Signal Butte Water Treatment Plant is that we are currently not physically capable of receiving and processing all of our CAP water rights. And so, once that project is up and running, we'll be able to increase or fully accept all the water, more of the water than we're entitled to under our CAP agreement. Is that correct? And if so, do you see this, is this allocation going to change, and will the percent of water coming to Mesa from the Colorado River, I mean, will this pie chart shift and will become more dependent on the CAP water?
Mayor, that's a good question. What you're seeing reflected on that pie chart, it won't change so much as where the water's being delivered from. So, rather than the bulk of the demand coming on Brown Road, and we were overstressing that treatment plant and the infrastructure, we're able to now meet the demands of southeast Mesa through the Signal Butte Water Treatment Plant, and thus relying less on groundwater in that area down there. But it does open the door for us to fully maximize our allocation of CAP supplies.
Mayor, we were always paying for our allocation of CAP. There were some times when we weren't able to treat all of it and pass it through because of the capacity limitation. So, I think we always express that we always had those rights, and we were always paying for those water rights. Now, we're able to maximize the water rights and actually push them through the system. I think that's better, because you could only push so much through Brown Road. Now, we have, I guess, two bites of the apple, I guess, Brown Road and Signal Butte, maybe is a better way of saying it. And it puts, and probably that along with the fact that we put less stress by not having to push so much pressure and pushing the water from northeast Mesa all the way to southeast Mesa. Is that correct?
Yeah, basically, each year, we place our water order based on what our demand loads are going to be and what we can actually deliver through the system. Having this second tap down there in Signal Butte allows us to maximize our uses, because now maybe instead of 5,800 acre-feet, we can order 60 or 72 acre-feet, because now we have two sources of water. We're taking the pressure off Brown Road. So, we've always had those allocations, but we only order what we think we need, knowing full well that we have the backup with the wells in the previous times. So, that's how we were...
But Jake, we were paying for it regardless.
We were paying for it regardless, yes.
Yeah, we were always paying for it regardless.
Okay.
And Jake, also, the Signal Butte Plant also acts as a loop system, right, for Brown Road, so that if we do have an outage on the Brown Road Plant, we can backfeed into northeast?
We can pump water up, yes. In the future, we'd probably, in the future, we'd have to have the conversation of having a dedicated pipe between the two, so the sister two. Right now, it's just going to have to be, we're pressure mounting south. Now, if that were to happen, we'd have to push north.
Thank you. Please proceed.
Yes, sir. Now, the shortage plan and preparation, just listing here a few things that we do is we secure water, we're also banking water, and that would be effluent from our wastewater treatment plants. Again, we're maintaining treatment capacity to meet future demands. And we've also, from 1982, we've been promoting very actively a voluntary water conservation program, as you're aware of, Water Use It Wisely, and which was a program that stemmed from the City of Mesa staff. So, why do we have a plan? It's a state requirement. Back in 2002, DWR set for statute that required a plan of all the water purveyors. This was in the midst of a huge drought and shortage on the SRP system. In 2003, our first plan was implemented and adopted by council, and again, in 2009, we revised that, mainly housekeeping and authority matters. And then, here in 2018, we're proposing another revision. We cleaned it up. But we're also really highlighting triggers that would identify when we need to declare shortages and what stage. So, the plan really has three components. We're always evaluating conditions on the system. We meet as a team when those conditions start presenting themselves that might warrant a recommendation to council. And there are four stages of shortage that we want to call out. Stage one really is a PR campaign. We know something's coming. We hear grumblings in the media, and to get ahead of that, we want to do a PR campaign, and that would be the only reason to declare a Stage One Water Watch. There are some provisions at the back of the plan that call out some measures that we could take voluntarily as a city, also as the residents. Stage two, there's triggers here. Just to call out, we're equal to or less than 50% of our SRP supplies, or on the CAP side, we're less than or equal to our 80% of our supplies there. That would be the triggers that we would come to you and ask to declare a Stage Two drought. We're still able to meet demands. The goal is 5% reduction in demand, and those would be found within city services. But, of course, with the PR, residents will be willing and able to do voluntary conservation measures. Stage three, you can see the triggers as well. It starts cutting deeper into our supplies. Again, we're able to meet demand. The goal is 10% reduction. We're going to be looking at our city facilities. Towards the tail end of this, there could be mandatory requests of our citizens, but at this point, we're able to do it in-house. And then, stage four, we're not able to meet demand, and there will be mandatory restrictions that will come before council. The plan does highlight some measures that could be taken by council. Those are not all-inclusive. We could also ask for additional measures from our citizens, and the goal here would be to reduce demand by 20%. And so, with that, I'll take any questions you might have.
Thank you. Mr. Thompson?
Brian, what is, can you talk, for those that don't know, can you talk a little bit about the Lake Mead levels and where we're at in Lake Mead and what that means for Arizona and everyone involved in the settlements with Lake Mead water?
Sure, absolutely. Lake Mead, as you know, we have the bathtub ring, which is being highlighted by the media almost daily. We do have some concerns there. 1075 is the trigger that would warrant a declaration by the Bureau of a Stage One shortage. That does not necessarily impact the City of Mesa. It does impact agricultural and possibly a minimal amount of non-Indian ag water users. Mead, at this point, is almost at the same level as it was this time last year, so it's holding steady. We are getting a full equalization from Lake Powell this year, and so the levels are expected to maintain this year. The Bureau does, on a month-by-month basis, look at probability of a shortage in future, and it is increasing in probability that shortage could be declared in 2020 or 2021, depending upon weather conditions and hydrology on the Colorado River system. So, we're looking really good. CAP, DWR, and the upper and lower basin states have been working collectively on water conservation measures to keep more water in Mead, to try to flatten out that curve of descent, and we're all watching that anxiously, month over month, as the Bureau reports those elevations.
Well, I think it's important to note, too, that Arizona, Arizonans traditionally have done very well in water conservation, especially when you look at California, who you would think was plush with water, was going through a drought, you know, a couple of years ago, where they were actually fining people for watering their, you know, watering their lawns, and restaurants weren't even handing out water automatically at tables, you had to ask for it. So, commend Arizonans for recognizing that water is a commodity, just like gold and just like silver would be, and so it's treated pretty much the same way in the desert.
Other questions? Yes, Mr. Freeman?
Thank you for your presentation. On Page 7, can you tell me a little bit more about abundant groundwater credits and allowance nearly 1 million acre-feet? Is that stored that we have, or credits, or have we been paying for that all along? I mean, million acre-feet, that's quite a bit of water.
That is a lot. This is a combination of our service area credits, Councilman Freeman, including our recharge credits. So, we have banked approximately 540,000 credits underground that we've recharged, combination of CAP, NCS, and effluent credits. And those are available to pull at any time that we need them. They're a one-time use. You use them, they're gone. But collectively, based on current demands, we have close to six years' worth of supply underground that we've stored. In addition, adding up to this 1 million is our service area credits that we have, and taking that into account over a period of years, that's where we came up with the 1 million.
Okay. And with that, do we have, and obviously, that's groundwater, banked water, so do we have pumps to pump that, or we're going to be in cooperation with SRP, pulling water out of their wells, trading water credits at all? I mean, that's...
Good question, Councilman Freeman. These are from our own wells.
Okay.
And all our wells are dedicated as recovery wells. So, throughout the city, we're able to recover those credits where we need them. So, if the east side was experiencing a shortage, we would turn on our wells east. If the city zone was in a shortage, or the Valvista Plant was down, we'll fire up our wells on the city side. So, collectively, we're able to manage demand with the wells. Normally, they're used for peak.
Okay, good. Well, I just want everybody to understand, that's a great savings account we have. And, you know, in this period of drought, like Councilmember Thompson talked about, we're good for a couple of more years with what we have adequately. However, we need as much rain and snowfall on our snowsheds and watersheds, as well as the upper basin as well, on the Colorado side. So, thank you for explaining that.
Gentlemen, this is a common question, I think, that we all get when we go out to the public. People say, I've been with some of these gentlemen, and we open it up for questions, and people raise their hand and say, what the heck, we live in a desert, you know, I see how bad things are in California. Why do we continue to build huge master plan communities in the desert? Aren't we going to run out of water? And I try to rehearse for them, as best I can, the history of the Salt River Project and the Central Ozon project, and all the groundwater recharging that we're doing, that you've done a great job of explaining a moment ago. But generally, can you address the issue of what is the likelihood that we're going to experience a water shortage in Mesa? Is it looking down forecasting growth and water supply? Do you see a problem 10, 15, 20, 30 years down the road, or is there a long-term sustainable source of water for our community?
Mayor, that's a fairly loaded question. Thank you. If we looked at the past four years, say, and projected that out into the future, yes, there could be a point in time where we would say that we're going to have difficulty meeting demand at current growth. Fortunately, on the SRP system, that's the reason why we do have reservoirs, and the way they manage the system, we're nowhere near running out of water there. Yes, if we had another winter or two like we just had, that situation will change on the SRP system. However, they do have many recovery wells along their system that they have stored water as well, and they're able to recover that water, that developed water, to meet most of our demands of their users. We are praying for rain, and we do hope that things turn around. SRP system typically is flashy. It runs every 10 to 12 years. You'll see these cycles. I'm hopeful that it maintains that flashy cycle, and it's not something that we're looking at a new norm where we're constantly dry, because no matter how SRP runs those reservoirs, we're going to need to change our paradigm on how we use water. And that inflection could occur in the future, but right now, we don't foresee any threat to our ability to meet demand both on SRP or the CAP system.
And so, Mayor, I think one of the things that we've also recognized is a lot of new development in Mesa today is actually a lot more water-efficient than the older neighborhoods. And so, the demand, even though you see lots of new growth, on a per-acre basis, the water consumption there is much less than it is in the older parts of the city, just because of the efficiencies of appliances and landscaping and a variety of things. Even our projections, we've had to adjust a little bit, because the anticipated growth isn't using as much water as we had initially projected. So, that's been, that's been good news.
And if I might jump on what Mr. Brady just said, is if you looked at our citywide, valleywide, if you look at the water usage, 20 years ago, we're still using the same amount of water today, and that's because of these conservation measures that have gone into place. So, as growth has occurred, we're not using necessarily more water per capita, we're using the same volume of water that we were 20 years ago. So, we're able to stretch that resource out much further, and as Mr. Brady had said, you know, with the new growth, and then the old areas of town have started to have to replace appliances, fixtures, and that's all low-use fixtures as well. So, our demands are starting to flatten out, and even on the wastewater side, we're seeing what we're getting in return is pretty flat.
Well, we could talk a lot about this, but we have a roomful of folks on other agenda items, so thank you very much for the presentation. Thanks for the update.
Mayor, just wanted to mention, actually, this plan is on Monday's agenda. It's 5F for adoption, so I just wanted to mention that.
Great, and it's on consent right now? Okay, thank you very much, gentlemen.
Thank you.
The next item on our agenda for this meeting is Item 2B, that's to hear a presentation and provide direction on general obligation bond items for the 2018 election, including funding mechanisms and operations and maintenance costs for public safety, parks, and cultural projects, and the Mesa Plays Project. Scott, Beth, good to have you with us.
Good morning, Mayor and council. Our intention today is to provide you an update on the potential projects for the general obligation bond election. We're going to go through the slides for the projects where we've had changes, based on either community feedback or council feedback, and then, as well as discuss the cost estimates as far as operations and maintenance impact is for those projects. However, we can also answer any questions for projects going back to our presentation from the 31st, should you have them. First, for athletic fields, the change that's been made here involves the projects out at Red Mountain Park. The community fields, which are the fields in the red box that are for public access use, those fields have an estimate of $25 million, those are included in the potential 2018 general obligation bond proposal. The tournament fields, which are the fields highlighted in yellow, those fields are not included in the bond proposal. However, we have identified other funding sources, and Mike Kennington will walk council through that following this presentation. For park amenities, the change that's been made involves the city center plaza. This is the plaza that's adjacent to the Mesa City Plaza Building. If you recall, there was a list of potential improvements that could be made with this project. The proposal now includes the water feature, as well as the ice skating rink. The revised estimate is at $7.7 million.
Yes. This downtown park, this is a requirement, in my understanding, of the ASU lease agreement, is that correct?
Yes.
And so, if this bond doesn't pass, what happens?
We'll have to look at other ways to meet that obligation.
So, there's no provision in the lease that says if the bond doesn't pass, it's required?
No. It doesn't, it's not, it's not dependent on the bond, the geobond passing.
Okay.
But it didn't include, it doesn't necessarily specifically include that it has to have, you know, an ice skating rink or water feature. We just, we, the previous presentation we had, we just showed it as just a plaza, a park, which I should also just remind council that, you know, when we did the previous bond package for parks, this was a project that was included, and we had identified, we'd already done all the, most of the design work and conceptual work, and so we were, we don't have to do much of that this time. But as part of the campus, this park was also included as part of that. What we've included this time, we didn't have in the previous presentation, was the idea that to continue the Merry Main Street concept, that we needed, we were going back and forth and trying to determine whether or not a permanent structure for the ice skating rink work versus the continuation of every year annually rebuilding one, and just looking at the cost to do that every year and the damage, you know, the inconvenience that it creates as far as a parking lot and the damage we determined, is, we think we found a method that allow us to improve that by adding it as a permanent structure to the plaza, so that's why we decided to make this. We think over time, this is a better idea than doing a temporary structure and rebuilding it every year, so.
Okay, so I guess my question is, if the bond doesn't pass, what is the anticipated source of...
Yeah, it'd probably be less, it'd probably be much less than this, and we would do it more just a simple park with a pathway, and so we'd have to come back with a revision for that. And then, we'd have to come back to council for a discussion on what that park would look like and where that funding source would come from.
Okay.
Mr. Brady, there's still, I'm sorry, Mr. Thompson?
Chris, would there be, could we look at, because when I'm looking at the bond overall, I'm trying to find areas in, within my own district where I can cut, just to keep us from, you know, from hitting that $111 million mark, and would we be able to look at utilizing, like, CDBG dollars, since this would be a park space that's for the betterment of the community as a whole, and then shift some of the CDBG dollars over to that project? so that we can reduce the 7.7 million? So, maybe, you know, maybe what CDBG dollars does is pay for the park itself, and then, we use bond dollars to build the ice rink, a permanent location for the ice rink, something of that nature.
Certainly, the council, we could take a look at, when we're going through the round of CDBG allocation. Remember, annually, CDBG is only 3-point-something million dollars. So, I mean, that's one, a whole year's allocation. So, we would talk about, it'd be a fraction of the cost here. But certainly, some we look at, we've done that in the past. We're funding Eagles Park. What other ones have we did with Eagles? Or Eagles and Fiesta? Or, no?
Eagles. It's all Eagles.
Eagles. So, we've been able to do that with some CDBG funds. But this last time, it was, how much was it? Did we allocate? Was it hundreds of thousands, though?
Yeah.
It wasn't millions?
About 800.
We could look at maybe phasing it, doing certain pieces over like a three or four-year period. So, it's phased in. So, it doesn't, so it's not a 7.7 million hit right off the bat on a bond.
Yeah, I think the thought there, if we're going to be doing the ASU, building the new ASU building and the whole, we should do all the campus at once and tie it and link it back to the Light Rail Station. And I think that was the original thought is, instead of, because assuming you're going to have lots of traffic of people coming back and forth here, the idea was to do that in conjunction with the ASU building.
So, if we do decide to do CDBG or other funding mechanisms, authorizing, this bond election is authorized bonds. It doesn't mandate the issuance of bonds. And so, as these projects are fleshed out and we explore other funding options, we might, may at some point, not issue all of these bonds. And then, talk a little bit about the ice rink. My impression of this is that the Mary Main Street ice rink concept was somewhat of an experiment. We put it out there, and we were leasing that equipment every year, fairly expensive. The cost was covered with donations from corporate sponsors and in-kind donations from construction companies. But my experience is that it's been well-received, and it's a popular thing. And again, my understanding is by shifting from a, we're going to lease all the equipment every year model to this proposed model, there's a cost savings attached to that.
We think over time it is. And just, I mean, the wear and tear puts on, just nothing else on the parking lot is significant. And so, we just, it took us some time to keep working with the design teams and engineers to try to understand what's out there in our climates that could work. But as you said, Mayor, it's become very popular. It's one of the most popular things during that time of the year, just from the volumes or the numbers of people that continue to come downtown Mesa for that particular activity. It continues to grow every year. And because of sponsorships and admission prices, we're covering the cost of operating. So, we think this is a small investment on the front end, but it'll give us more, a permanent structure that'll be there, that can be used year-round then, too. The idea is when it's not an ice skating rink, which would really only be a very small part of the time, there could be a modest water feature there that, again, continues to attract people into the area.
That's a blast at.
A blast at, or something, yeah.
All right. Thank you. Mr. Thompson?
Chris, could we also look at, for the ice rink and so forth, could we also look at maybe doing some type of naming rights to help offset some of our cost? And so, you know, we build the structure, and then, we allow, let's say, SRP or someone else to put their name on it for a certain amount so that it offsets our cost.
Well, we, yes, and we could do that. We've done that, certainly seasonally for the Mary Main Street specifically. We've gotten major sponsors who, whether, I think one year it was the Coyotes, and it's been the SRP. So, we, yeah, it's been successful that way. And that's how we, and we'll continue to do that. And we're going to continue to seek sponsorships, because we'll still have to put up the panels, and we'll have the advertising and the promotion. So, we will continue to do that to offset the operations costs and utility costs around this. So, I think it's just the capital costs, because after that, we're pretty confident, based on the current experience, to operate this, we'll be able to cover our costs.
Thank you.
Okay. Our next area is pathways, and the change here is on the Eastern Canal Shared Use Path. The cost of this has been reduced. The focus of this project now is to address the pedestrian crossings to ensure safe access for those who use it, but would leave out the pavement of the pathway, but focus more on pedestrian safety in the area.
I'm sorry. Can you go back to that slide, just because I think there's a lot of information there. The checked lines are the existing paved surface. The yellow line is an existing project that we have funds for. The solid red line is what we're proposing to pay for with the bond money, correct?
Correct.
And it says Broadway to McKellips, but it looks like it starts at Brown and goes to Broadway. Am I just, am I missing something?
Brown to Broadway.
Yeah, Brown. So, Mayor, the improvement there is where the focus of the project is, is from Brown to Broadway. We were just also showing the fact that by doing this section, it's connecting other pieces that are already completed.
Oh, I see.
But also, Mayor, this is a modification from what we had shown before, where we had initially anticipated doing paving, pavement and lighting in that solid red section. Again, in order, as kind of council, to meet priorities of some other projects, we've scoped this project down. And one of the challenges of this project, I mean, there's already, as you know, Mayor, a lot of people are already using this pathway regardless of the pavement. But the thing that's most concerning, there's a lot of, I think even in this one area, there's at least three, I think it's three or four?
There's five traffic signals.
Five, five signals that pedestrians have to cross, go onto the canal. And so, what we thought we'd do is prioritize this project to focus on that first, on the pedestrian crossings, and then maybe subsequently continue to work with SRP and maybe MAG to find dollars for the pavement. People are already using the pathway, but the concern we had is just the five different crossings of these streets, and they're kind of very busy intersections. And we felt like that, maybe we should address that first from a safety perspective, then come back with other sources and look for the pavement and lighting.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Luna?
So, Beth, since initially, we're not going to pave it, we're focusing on trying to put the traffic signals to allow people to cross. So, you'll maintain as far as grading and making sure it's?
Yes, our transportation group will do the maintenance on the canal, then, on the pathway.
And have you heard any issues from community members about that? Or, I'm sure they prefer the paved?
I have not. I might defer to RJ real quick to see if he's heard anything.
I know they're really popular, especially.
They're very popular.
Yeah, people riding their bikes. I hear it all the time from my friends that ride their bikes through there, and they really enjoy taking advantage of those.
Mayor Vice President, I'm sorry. Can you repeat the question?
Are there any issues from community members relative to it being dirt as opposed to pavement? Is that, are you hearing any complaints?
I don't know that we've heard complaints. Well, we do get requests all over the city. I mean, that people would like to see us expand the path system in general. As you all know, it's very popular, and people are supportive, you know, where we've gone in and improved previously unimproved areas. But as Mr. Brady said, people are using, you know, these areas, whether the city has gone in and done a more formal improvement or not. You know, we'd love to see if we can stretch the dollars to include some pavement as part of this project, but we will focus on the safety side. And, because, again, people are using it now. So, if at least we can make the crossings safer for folks, I think we've gone a long way.
This is kind of the similar approach we took in the budget adoption for the pathway behind Greenfield Park, right? Where, instead of, we were putting in, I think we decided to put in a pedestrian crossing there, and, right, a signal, was it a signal or a pad? Didn't we include that in the, behind the Greenfield Park?
The Good 60 project, as we're calling it, we need to engage ADOT in conversation on that. We had done some analysis on a fully improved path system. We're going to go back and talk with ADOT about an interim improvement. The issue on that project specifically is the channel that runs along this, you know, runs along the freeway, and we need to make sure we're protecting folks from going into the channel. So, it's a work in progress. But yes.
Great. So, Mr. Brady, you're going to work with MAG and SRP?
Yeah, we'll continue to look for ways to pave it. But I think we thought our first priority would be, is get people across the streets first safely, and then, we could come back. And other than geobonds, there are other sources sometimes that come available for the pavement. So, we thought that we could give ourselves some time to look for that.
At times, there's federal money, you know, that's available for air quality, and those are things we're always looking for.
And we always get a certain allocation of aesthetics dollars from SRP as well. But, you know, they're generally under $2 million, closer to $1 million a year. So, we're talking to them and working with them on.
And you'll do sections at a time as you have the dollars coming in?
As the dollars come in.
Yeah. Mr. Freeman, and then Jeremy.
While RJ's up here, I've met with staff several times about these projects. And so, I know you want to signalize them. Is there any way we can phase in the signalization? I'm looking at trying to reduce the cost, $2.1 million for five signalization. I know some of them are a little wider, some of them are a little narrower. Is there any way that we can reduce some of that, maybe not do all signalized sections in this funding process?
Sure, yeah.
I'm just trying to phase it in, and maybe at another time. This goes through my district. People use it. They love it. They've adapted to the concept. And what are your thoughts on that?
Mayor, Councilmember Freeman, we'd be happy to sit down with you. You know, when you talk about signalizing in an intersection, whether it's a pedestrian path or a roadway, kind of the baseline is $250,000 per signalized crossing. And then, it depends on the physical, you know, kind of issues you're dealing with. You go up from that. But we're happy to sit down and talk, as we've done on some other sections in your district. Do we light sections? Do we not light sections? You know, because we do get requests to add lighting to some path sections, but I know that can create different issues for neighbors. So, we're more than willing to sit down and chat with you.
But RJ, your group could prioritize, kind of from a safety perspective, which intersections are most critical?
We can.
And then, we could decide to phase those in over time, if that's what the council's asking us. We could certainly do that. We were taking on all five. If we wanted to only take on two or three of them, that's fine, too.
I'm just trying to maybe defer some monies over to another.
Well, why don't we prioritize from just a volume and safety perspective, and then, we could come back with a modified version?
Okay. Thank you. Oh, I'm sorry, Jeremy. Well, maybe before I forget, let me just, let me just say that literally this morning, driving to this meeting, as I pulled onto McKellips from my neighborhood, I had to pause to wait for some great people to finish traversing McKellips as they were out exercising, getting across the canal. And I'm not, I swear to God, that's true. So, I think it is important to remind ourselves that safety, there have been people killed in exactly that scenarios in our community every couple of years. So, there's real good reasons to do some of this. I'm sorry, Jeremy?
Yeah, I just want to clarify one thing, too, that the $2 million represents only 1% of the entire bond package, which is $200 million. So, I mean, I think to look for cost efficiencies in 1% of the total cost is somewhat micromanaging the bond project. But my original question was, has the Greenfield to Val Vista ADOT opening for the canal project been put on hold as far as this CAP project is concerned?
There is not currently a CAP project for that.
But that's when we're working with ADOT.
Correct.
So, what we took from that, Councilmember, is, I mean, we could, I guess what we understood, your interest was priorities to work with ADOT, first just to get the.
Absolutely.
The fence open, and then, kind of make sure it ties into the path that goes north, right? Or?
East to west.
East to west on the canal. So, that's what we were going to prioritize. I mean, if you had an interest to do anything more than that.
Absolutely. I don't want to spend any money. We don't have to. It's more so just making it open and accessible.
Right. And we got that. And there may be some, we may need to dress it up a little bit with signage or whatever, but that's what we understood was the priority.
We would likely have to incur some cost because of the ADOT channel along the 60.
But that's nothing that needs to go in the bond, the bond package.
No. Just letting you know that it, there's a little bit more work than just asking ADOT to allow access.
Excellent. Thank you, RJ.
And so, Council, just quickly, that's why it won't show up in a CAP, because we don't think it needs to. We think the funding will, will almost come from like an operations account.
Thank you. Any more questions on the paths? If not, thank you. Please proceed.
Our next area is a cultural area. Based on feedback two weeks ago, the project that's been revised is the idea museum improvements. This project now includes to fully fund Phase One at a cost of $5 million. It includes those improvements as well as some additional improvements to fully fund that Phase One. So, looking at the parks and cultural proposal overall, including the bond issuance cost estimate, it's a total of $111 million. The way that that translates as far as the secondary property tax impact to the median homeowner is an annual cost of $24.
Describe what the median homeowner is, just so people know. Do we take the average-priced home in Mesa and?
It won't be average. It'll be the median. So, it's kind of where it fits on that scale in the middle of all home prices. And Ryan's going to answer the question, because he came up with the statistic. He came up with the number. I think it's the number that comes from the county. Is that right, Ryan? Or is that something you're able to?
Good morning, Mayor, Council. Yeah, we receive from the county assessor each year a median value for the limited value of a property. We then back into a, what that would mean as far as comparable sales value. I have the number here. I want to say it's around, I want to say it's around $175,000 of a comparable sales value. But let me find that number, and maybe I can.
Yeah, you can tell us the exact one later, yeah.
Great.
So, that's how, we get that from the county, pull it off of their number, and then, we run our.
Right.
Impact on that.
So, a statistician would say this more correctly, I'm sure, you know, the difference between a median and an average. But what we're saying is, the average home in Mesa median average is $174,000. For that family, you're talking about $24 a year in additional secondary property tax.
Yes. So, Mayor, the value I was thinking of was the full cash value, which is one of the values you receive in your valuation each year. That constitutes, the way that the valuation works is, that's not the full value, that's not the sales value of your property. So, you can think of it as a, it would be a $208,000 sales value. So, if your home would sell for $208,000, that's the median value for next tax, the tax year we're coming into in this next budget year, that starts life first.
So, $200,000, probably easiest to round up, remember?
Okay. If your home's worth a little over $200,000, this is what you're looking at?
Right. $24 per year, so $2 a month.
Okay. Thank you. Jeremy?
I've got a question. This is just not relevant, but what is the average sales cost, price of a house in Mesa versus the median? Is there a huge difference? Do you not know that number?
Mayor Giles, Councilmember Whitaker. No, we don't, they don't publish, they don't give us that. So, we don't have that.
Fair enough. And I'm assuming this is a 20-year bond. So, this $24 annual impact would expire after 24 years. $480 total cost to the average median house. Is that correct?
Mayor, Councilmember Whitaker, generally correct, but we do sell the bonds over a planned period of four years. So, in essence, we don't, we ramp up to that impact, and then, we, you can think of it as it would ramp down. So, it'd really be about 24 years is what you could think of.
Okay. Awesome.
Phased in and out, yeah.
Sure. Thanks, Ryan.
But in the past, we've experienced with growth and new construction, just like the council did recently, you actually lowered the secondary property tax impact. So, assuming growth as it continues today, this number could be lower with new development coming in. But frankly, just going forward, this is what the plan for. But we have seen adjustments down, just as we did this council. Actually, I'm not sure why it never gets reported, but you actually approved a tax decrease on the secondary property tax, so.
So, is property values in the city increase as there's additional commercial?
Additional value is added to the rolls, and you spread this cost out over more of a tax base, and it lowers it for the individual.
So, if there's a recession, this number could go up or?
Yeah. No, so you have to be balanced. So, it can go either way, yeah. So, we just stick with the 24. But in this past year, it's actually, people are paying less than they did from their values the prior year.
Got it.
And that's not just growth in their, I mean, there obviously, sometimes there's growth in their value, which obviously could increase their taxable rate. But what we've seen is also, and of course, it gets capped every year, the new growth, what we can include, I think we're capped at 5%. Yeah. And even though we can go up to 5% more in value because of new growth, it actually, the real number was 7% or something like that.
So, this, Mayor Chris, this past year, the total growth in taxable value was about 7.5%. 2% of that was because of new growth, new property, new buildings. 2% of that was because of new growth, new property, new buildings. There's, there's no new land, so it's really new construction. The growth in existing property taxable value is 5.5%, which puzzled us at first because there's this 5% limit on, on existing property. So how could that be? And, and the assessor's office, when we asked, there, there is a, there is an exception. The residential and commercial property has this 5% limit. What's called centrally valued property does not. It's not limited each year, so it can go up and down as much as, it can go up as much as it goes up. And centrally valued property are things like railroads, pipes, mines, things that cross county lines. So they're valued differently, it's somewhat technical, but they're not valued by the county, they're valued by the state and they're not subject to the 5% limit. So we had some of that growth and the value of those properties was more than 5%.
But the good news was, it was a decrease in the effective rate, is that correct?
Right, of, of around 7%. The rate declined.
Great, we've got a room full of people, so it's fascinating as this discussion is.
Ryan and I could talk about this all day long.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. As far as the, the operations and maintenance impact for these projects, you can see those numbers. The majority of that, obviously for the park system, has to do with landscape maintenance, grass maintenance. There is staff cost in that as well, as far as both maintaining them and also managing the use of them. On the cultural side, obviously, the, the major project in that estimate is the library. It includes materials purchased for that initial first year, as well as shelving and some of the other equipment that is needed within that, the library, so.
I'm sorry, Mr. Thompson.
Chris, I know that in our strategic planning session, I know my colleague, Councilmember Glover, and someone else had asked about looking at future bonding initiatives and specifically with parks and cultural type things, to see if there's a dedicated funding source for the ongoing O and M on those. Are we starting to look at that specifically when we start talking about the cultural and the, and the parks and athletic fields here? Are we looking at dedicated funding sources to, to take care of that ongoing maintenance versus always pulling it out of the general fund to pay?
I guess that would really be a council decision about a dedicated revenue source, because if it's not already in the general fund, then it would have to be a new revenue generated by some new fee or tax. Council would like us to give that consideration, obviously. That would be, I don't know, I'm not sure.
But I think that was during the strategic planning session, I think that was part of the discussion is that's what we, what council wanted to start looking at is trying to figure out what those dedicated revenue are, one of those, what are those dedicated sources that, that could be implemented to pay for the ongoing maintenance? Because I remember a couple of years ago, we shifted a lot of money around from our different parks because the ongoing maintenance became such a burden on us from the city's perspective that we couldn't build new parks because we couldn't maintain them. And so to make sure that we don't get into that situation again, where we build a bunch of parks, but then we can't maintain them because our costs increase on the maintenance side, there needs to be a funding source. I think that was kind of the direction that the council was kind of giving at the time, was start looking at what we can do for dedicated funding sources, whether it would be, you know, the fees associated with or what have you to, to pay for these ongoing O and M costs into perpetuity.
Certainly if council's interested in coming up with a dedicated, you know, fee or revenue or tax related to parks maintenance, I think we could do that. What I'd suggest that we do is, we want to, obviously we're going to need to come back in a more detailed conversation about the operation and maintenance of parks if, once it's approved in November. And because that will also determine the schedule of these parks. We're not going to be able to get all this done in the first year. It's going to take four to five years and we'll, and as you mentioned in the past, because of budget constraints, we have deferred park projects until such time that there was sufficient funds for the maintenance. So that may happen, I mean, I don't know, it could happen again going forward. So, but we could certainly, at the beginning of January, once these are approved and we're coming up with a plan, we could, we could further have that conversation about a sales tax for parks or some kind of fee or revenue that would be paid for that. So we could do that once we know whether these projects are moving forward.
Jeremy, what is the funding source today of this O and M?
It's the general fund. So it's a growth in the general fund. That's how we, the last bond package, as we, you know, we, as the growth in the, the sales tax growth base continues to grow or other fees, that's how we, we schedule these to come in during that time. But again, we're, that's what we look at the beginning of every year in our forecast, is we know the schedule, the CIP of the projects, but we also allocate the cost to maintain them. And if we're not, if that year the revenues, the general fund are not sufficient, we'll defer the construction of a project until such time that we, you know, the growth in general fund can sustain the operations.
Seems like cost recovery is not generally something we are really good at when it comes to operating parks, because that's something that we plan on losing money on is, that's why we do it, is to provide a service. But I, I think part, the, the next part of this presentation will be a fairly innovative idea about how can you actually make some revenue off of a park? So that'll be interesting to see. But since we're talking about libraries and cost recovery, I know the proposed library at the, at the Queen Creek, yet to be named school district high school, is a shared use. To what extent are we getting some financial partnership from the school district on that?
So Mayor, we haven't had that conversation with, we haven't gotten that far with the conversation with the, the school district. As, and also I should say, I want to be careful, I think we will promote, present this library as a southeast library, not as the Queen Creek library, only because there may, we, there possibly, there's another location that we're looking at. And so we would, we want to keep those options open. It's still being southeast Mesa, but it just, whether it's at the school district side or whether it's closer into the neighborhood, those are, that's what we're evaluating now. I don't know that our costs would dramatically shift. There may be some resources that the school district would provide as far as the types of curriculum or, or not curriculum, circ, what do we call it? The books?
Collection.
The books and whatever.
Collection.
Collection, that's what I'm looking for. The collection and other resources, they may be assist us with that. But we have, we, Mayor, we just haven't had that conversation.
Okay. Right, seems a little premature until we know exactly what piece of dirt we're going to.
Right, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Our next area is public safety. You'll remember this includes our fire apparatus replacement proposal for two stations, a police substation, the evidence facility, and then public safety communications fiber. The, the project that we've made a modification to is the public safety fiber project as we've evaluated the priorities with Randy Thompson's group. The, the downtown loop, which is their most critical area, includes the communications building, fire station 201, the regional dispatch center. That piece will be included in this project as well as their next highest priority. The piece that we've removed is down in southeast Mesa. Working with Randy's group, at this time, it's not as high of priority as the other segments, but it will be addressed, it can be addressed later on.
Yeah, and especially since we're looking at other locations for fire stations, it, it just seemed that we're kind of getting ahead of ourselves. And usually, a lot of times, this happens over a long period of time, these fiber programs. Sometimes we're able to do joint projects with other fiber companies. So the 8 million will get us to the most critical areas. And this loop, the red downtown loop is by far the most critical of all those that we have, because that connects our emergency operations center all the way back up to our communication center. So that's good.
So keeping with the theme of cost recovery, Mr. Brady, when we do this, is there not the opportunity to install excess dark fiber and additional conduits and potentially earn revenue from that?
Mayor, that's a good point. Yes, we do that now. We install conduit in the ground and then we work with private entities to lease that conduit over time. An example is what we did in southeast Mesa that you don't see on this map is what we did with Zayo. It was a deal. And then they, they actually paid some upfront monies to lease conduit for 20 years, as well as they did some in-kind work where they installed fiber and conduit for us. So kind of in that southeast area, we have some opportunities really to joint venture private company and, and maybe lease some of our conduits as we put them in.
So we wouldn't do it as a bond package, we'd do it as a joint partnership. But we look for those opportunities, and we've done pretty well financially on those.
But while the trenches are open, we throw more conduit in and more dark fiber. And then generally speaking, that's a hot commodity right now, isn't that the case? Okay. Thank you.
Mayor, real quick.
I'm sorry.
Is a question, police substation and fire station northeast, is that a, still a joint?
Yes, well, it's priced that if they have to be separately, they can, but we're looking for sites to bring them together, is that?
Mayor, Councilmember Heredia, the limiting factor in this part of the city is the availability of land. There are very few parcels in the seven, eight acre age size that we need for a joint venture type facility. We're looking at some of those now and, but if we have to split them apart into smaller two or three acre parcels, we may have to do that just depending upon the availability and the willingness of the sellers.
So just real quickly, Mayor, removing that, that segment in the southeast portion lowered the cost 2 million dollars to the 8 million dollar number you see there. The next slide just shows the summary of, of the cost of these improvements as long, along with a bond issuance cost estimate, bringing the total to 85 million dollars. Again, that, the impact, the translation to the secondary property tax impact is 19 dollars annually.
If you don't mind, I'm going to ask a devil's advocate question on this, because we, we've had some great presentations about changing the model of our delivery, particularly in fire and, and public safety. And we're about to spend 25 million dollars on new apparatus. Are we buying the right apparatus, given the, the potential change in, in the way we're going to respond to calls? Are we, do we need more ladder trucks or do we need more SUVs? Or is that something to this?
Yes, yes.
Mayor, in all fairness, we, we buy the best apparatus out there.
Yeah. How many wheels do we need on these apparatus?
Mayor Giles, members of the council, yes, we are looking at all of that. We're looking at our new staffing models and we are evaluating what is the right unit for these new staffing models that we are developing right now. We're working with the Office of OMB on the data to show what types of staffing models we need in what parts of Mesa. And we are looking at modifying that. So we're also looking at the different types of vehicles we need to provide this service. So we don't lose the quality of service, but we're modifying the staffing model to match the needs.
But Chief, and Scott confirmed this, the 24.7 million is, that's replacing existing apparatus, is that correct?
That's correct.
And so Mayor, while you're correct, we're looking at different staffing, or different service delivery models. I think at the end of the day, what our hope is to put less demand on the apparatus in the future for the lower acuity emergence, medical calls. And, but we still need to replace the ones that are at their useful, end of their useful life.
That's correct, Mr. Brady is correct in that. We do have, we do, we do need fire trucks, you know, strategically placed throughout the city. And this 24 million is to replace some of those as they get older and have a lot of miles on them.
Okay, thank you. I knew you'd thought through that and there was a plan, but I just wanted the public to know that we were thinking about that.
Absolutely.
For the record, how much is an engine company, an engine and a ladder company?
The average cost of a fire engine is about 800 and a ladder runs about 1.2 million dollars.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So here's a summary of, of both categories, parks and culture and public safety, as well as, as well as our totals. Just a reminder that these, these would appear as separate questions on a ballot. As far as our next steps, as the city clerk pointed out, our, the last, on the 31st, the direction from council would be to call for an election if, if desired on, by July 2nd. And then second would be an opportunity for us to come back down the road following the election to discuss what Chris mentioned earlier as far as what the sequencing and, and timing would be of these projects. We know that there's the desire for all these projects to be completed within the first couple of years. However, reality, whether it's O and M or other programming needs dictate that it may be a four to six year schedule for us in order to complete these projects.
Okay, thank you, council. Any additional questions? We do have several requests to speak, so let's, let's take care of that now. Thank you folks for being here, thank you for your patience this morning. First card on the, at the top of the stack is Steve West. Steve, welcome. And just for all the speakers, there is a, a time limit of three minutes. So thank you for keeping that in mind. Thank you, welcome, Steve.
Thank you and good morning, Mayor and council members. My name is Steve West, 31-year resident of Mesa. We, my, my wife Julie and I have raised our family here. We, we have a great love for Mesa. We thank each of you for your public service and also take this opportunity to thank our wonderful city staff. I think we've got a great city staff. I'm here to support the, this parks initiative, particularly the, the piece that we've been calling Mesa Plays. And I, I want to make two comments about that. One, you're faced with allocating scarce resources and there are wonderful amenities that we need throughout the city. Mesa Plays, these, these parks are not only wonderful amenities and needed amenities, but they also represent an opportunity for us, in my view, for a, a new revenue stream for the city of Mesa. Conservative estimates that we have, and I might mention, I've been a board member of Visit Mesa for about 25 years. Conservative estimates show that these, these parks not only will serve our citizens, but will bring others into our city and create new revenue streams, which we, we, in my view, desperately need. The other thing I'd like to say is, in, in my estimation, we have one of the finest destination marketing organizations in the United States. And we're not, that, that organization is charged with sharing with the world the great amenities that we have and inviting them here to, to use them and to bring new revenues into our city. And so with that, I just would strongly recommend and endorse your support of these, these new fields.
Thank you, Steve.
Thank you.
David Hines.
Welcome. Mr. Mayor and City Council, I'm David Hines. I'm a 40-year resident of Mesa, 30 years in the Mesa School District till I retired. And I am currently the executive director of the Arizona Interscholastic Association that oversees all high school athletics in Arizona. And my support for Mesa Plays is it's an opportunity for our city to provide opportunities for our kids, not only in Mesa Public Schools, but to be able to bring events to the city that I think will help. Again, as was stated, additional funding sources for business, also for fees that would be used for the facility to help offset costs for operations and maintenance. And I'm going to use the example of Skyline Pool that the city and the Mesa Parks and the Mesa School District created a facility that is used as our home of the state high school swimming championships and is also used for the Grand Prix where there's only five of those in the entire world that we host one of those with Aaron Coy and Steve Hogan. That it's a great opportunity. I was in Indianapolis at a meeting and they were showing the Grand Prix on ESPN and I said, there's Skyline, that's the pool we use for our high school state championships. And I think this is a positive thing for Mesa and I support that fully.
Thank you, David.
Thank you.
Steve Hogan.
Good morning.
Welcome.
First day stole a lot of my thunder and that's good. Before I get to the Mesa Plays, that's what I'm here for. Something came up here, as some of you may have known, two years ago I was hit by a hit and run. I was riding my road bike, got hit by a car right in the area where you're looking at the pass. I can't guarantee, but I tell you, if that path were there, I probably would have been on the path. So I support that part.
I was thinking of you when I said what I said, Steve.
Yeah, yeah, and unfortunately, a day later, another individual was struck and was killed. I just, you know, I had a broken neck, few other injuries, but I'm here, so that's good. The Mesa Plays, about 10 years ago, I came before this council and we talked about the pools. And we talked about what a great benefit it would be and it has been. The nice thing about the pools and what I feel that the Mesa Plays does, it's used every day by. The nice thing about the pools and what I feel that the Mesa Plays does, it's used every day by Mesa community, by our kids, everybody, all the time. So it's a community use type of project, it's used all the time. It also then, as Dave mentioned, is used for high school tournaments. We have all types of invitational tournaments. We use that, which helps generate tax dollars, brings people to hotels, restaurants, et cetera. The Grand Prix, we mentioned with the pools. In 2019, for the second time, we're hosting the U.S. National Master Swim Meet, that's coming up. That's gonna bring in 2,000 people from around the world for about a week that will be, again, using hotels and spending their time in Mesa. So to me, this is a similar type project. It's a win-win for everybody. The community can use the fields throughout every single day of the year. We can bring in outside revenue, outside resources, and it's a great prestigious type of thing that we could use. The other part from the schools aspect, we could always use more fields. A lot of times, hopefully, we do get rain, as has been brought up before. On times when it rains, we've had to go to Gilbert and use some of their field turf, you know, the artificial turf fields in order to finish our season. We have no place in Mesa to do that, this would allow us. So I'd just like to express our support for these projects. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. And when you say our support, tell us about the foundation, or what organization are you representing?
And this is, you know, I am the Athletic Director for Mesa Public Schools. I also am part of the East Valley Community Foundation. We help to host a lot of these outside events and working very closely with Visit Mesa. And Visit Mesa has been an outstanding partner with us, so we're very appreciative of their efforts.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Bobby, help me, Bobby, Dooley, excuse me. Welcome, Bobby.
Thank you. Good morning, Mayor, council. My name is Bobby Dooley. I'm the Chief Operating Officer for Phoenix Rising Football Club, Arizona's highest professional team here in the valley that's trying to bring a major league soccer franchise here to Arizona. So, you know, we're here, you know, representing the organization in complete support of Mesa Plays. As I have the opportunity to travel around the country and meet with major league soccer officials and United Soccer League officials and youth organizations, there's just a tremendous need for soccer fields across the country. So we're, of course, supportive of this initiative, the opportunity to, you know, provide more fields for kids, for more training. That's, that's all we hear every day, is provide more soccer fields. You know, as we try to secure a major league soccer franchise, and we're gonna start a youth academy, we see an opportunity to not only partner with the city as a potential operator of the facility, but also as a user for fields, for academy, for training, for our first team, for teams all at different levels. And one other initiative that we're seeing down in Tucson, as we acquired a franchise down in Tucson, a semi-professional team, 12 major league soccer franchises traveled onto Tucson this year for preseason. There's not an official cactus league, per se, for major league soccer. There's a tremendous desire by many teams across major league soccer to find a home for preseason, a permit, semi-permit home, and this is another reason that we're in tremendous support of this opportunity here in Mesa, to bring Mesa, or to bring spring training, per se, for major league soccer on an annual basis and generate a tremendous amount of revenue for the city of Mesa. Thank you.
Thank you, Bobby. Rick Kelsey.
Good morning, Mayor, council members. My name is Rick Kelsey. I'm the Chief Executive Officer for Arizona Soccer Association, and we 100% support the Mesa Plays initiative. One of the things that we want to make sure we highlight, we have 40,000 registered youth players in Arizona today, with 10,000 of those coming here from the Southeast Valley. We also represent the organizations that are tied to U.S. soccer, U.S. youth soccer, and we have the ability and have brought significant regional and national events to the valley. In current times, we host the ODP Regional Championships, which brings about 220 teams the first week of every January from all over the west to the Phoenix market. Currently, we play that at Reach 11. We're looking for places to be able to host these kind of events, to not only just bring you the dollars that are coming from, I live in Surprise, Arizona, from Surprise, Arizona, all the way over here to East New Mexico. But also, I get this all the time, living in Surprise, I live in California. But really, what we're looking to do is, how do we establish the right partnerships to grow the game? And when you look at what we can do, we have the credibility, and the organization has proven its merits to be able to bring these events at a regional and national level. Next week, we're going to Honolulu to play a regional event. There's only six states in the 14 Western, 14 Western region states that can host an event for the entire west region. Arizona's one of them. The heat is not the issue. So we're not not bringing events here because of the heat, we can overcome those. What we need to ensure is, not only do we have the right fields, the right supports, the right amenities around those fields to support that community that's coming in to visit, but make sure we have the support of the city, and we can have the right partnerships going forward. So Arizona Soccer Association is 100% behind this effort, not only because we like the fields, but we're committed to be in partners with the city of Mesa and Visit Mesa to bring these events and deliver.
Thank you, Rick. Phil Austin.
Good morning, good morning, Mayor and council. Phil Austin, 8648 East Nora Street, Mesa, we're counting here. My family's been here since 1920. So I'm pleased to hear personally and as a chairman of the East Valley Hispanic Chamber of Commerce to address you on the matter of Mesa Plays, parenthetically, or also in favor of public safety and other initiatives. But in regard to Mesa Plays, I think it's incumbent on me as chair and personally as kind of a fiscal conservative to really think about supporting an effort to increase taxes and only, only support that if it meets the following criteria. One, it's a wise investment, one that brings a strong return. The fact that it's only, again, that part of it, about $12, family of year is very important. Second, that it promotes economic activity directly. That is, we're gonna be seeing revenues coming from the investment right away. I think this qualifies. Third, that it enhances the community. And I think the people have talked about the recreational amenities and the fact that it'll attract not only businesses who directly involved with soccer, but other businesses looking for quality of life here. And third, that it'll have indirect economic benefit, that is, bringing in more business and investment. As Chair of the East Valley Hispanic Chamber of Commerce, we're also concerned that it be, affect and benefit all facets of the community. And we are pledged to work with the city and Visit Mesa to make sure that, as you might know, the Latino community is involved in soccer, those type of activities, to make sure that they are included. So this is just part of, I believe, the benefit of a private-public initiative. As a government employee for 20 years, I saw, I knew that government cannot do matters by itself. Only when it's involved with private enterprise and nonprofits can we have that quality initiatives that address the community's needs. This is just part of the most of the collaboration we've noticed in the immediate past. The economic juggernaut that's caused, that's known as, you know, spring training, was primed by government, government investment. The boon that we're experiencing at Gateway Airport is also a result of government investment to bring businesses in to create the dynamo. And finally, to address the issue of things like Mesa Royale, it's a combination of government working with private investors to address the situation. So these are examples of how private and public collaboration could work. And it's for that reason, we have some in the audience, members of the Hispanic community who support this. But it's for that reason, the East Valley Hispanic Chamber Board unanimously endorsed the proposal. And I want to add, finally saying, there's a, there's a saying, saying, "A cynic knows the price of everything and the value of nothing." We applaud you for understanding the value of this proposal and voting to support it. Thank you.
Thank you, Phil. Brad Sessmat. AKA the big guy, right?
His chair fits, right?
That's right. Welcome, Brad.
Thank you, thank you. Good seeing so many familiar faces, sitting in chambers and visiting with you. And unfortunately, Mr. Hines and Mr. Hogan, Mr. Dooley have stolen quite a bit of my thunder. I am the CEO of Sports360az.com, and 25 years have been on television and radio here doing sports in the valley. I am in Mesa more often than in my home city of Gilbert. I was in Mesa over the weekend, seeing water polo teams from Utah and New Mexico and Colorado, all staying in hotels, all very much enjoying themselves, or staying in Airbnbs, all in the sport of water polo as it's grown. Mark Garcia is the main reason why that I'm here, because there's no one as good as Mark when it comes to getting things done. And when Mark first told me about this project, I took a step back because I was that soccer dad. And this is not just about soccer, this is youth and amateur sports. I was that soccer dad, as you know, Mayor Giles, for years, that drove to Reach 11 from Gilbert, where the Ostrich Festival had their home tournament in Chandler, and we'd still drive to Reach 11 to play our games because there was no field space. That's just in one sport. And so when I started to see Mesa Plays, and I started to see people like Steve Hogan, who's put on a terrific event, Visit Mesa Basketball Tournament, which is a huge success every year, and I started to see the people that were associated with this, and the vision of 2 million people moving into the Southeast Valley in the next 20 years, this was something that, to me, from a community standpoint, I've always felt, somebody has to have the vision here. And when Mark got involved on this, and Steve and others, I said, "I want to get involved on this and be a community voice." And that's why I'm here, and that's why I support what's going on with Mesa Plays. Thanks.
Thank you, Brad. Rich Adams.
Good morning again, Mayor and council. Rich Adams at 1536 East Elmwood Circle in Mesa, obviously here in support of Mesa Plays. Couple of things I heard this morning. First of all, I don't know how to follow these speakers any better than they already made their case for Mesa Plays, but when I think in terms of simple math, for around 12 cents a day, the cost of this entire bond package we're talking about, what else can you get like this for 12 cents a day? It's just amazing. If you'll recall, the Falcon Visioning Commission, as well as Imagine Mesa, keyed in on Mesa Plays or the concept of that project. And I think you're all familiar with the economic impact that this project can have. But I think in my mind, one of the most important things that Mesa Plays brings about is by the example of these young people sitting right back here. This is about our youth. This is about our future. This is about a community that I grew up in, that folks had the foresight to make sure that there were parks and amenities that, when I was a child here, I had a place to play. And I think we have an obligation to see to that for the future, for young folks like these and others to come along. So we'd appreciate your support for Mesa Plays and the entire package, the public safety aspects of it as well. I think we're so lucky to live here in Mesa. We have the finest destination marketing organization in the country, in my opinion, in Visit Mesa. We have one of the finest fire and medical departments, and these are all important things. And I know that, I know you agree with me on that. So thank you for your support, and thank you for your public service to Mesa.
Thanks for your service, Rich. I know you're very active in a lot of city boards and committees, including economic development. Appreciate all you do. The last card I have is from Mark Garcia.
Good morning, Mayor, council. I'd like to echo Steve West's remarks earlier, that I don't think people realize just how much work you put in, put in on behalf of the citizens of Mesa. I don't necessarily think people realize the sacrifices that you all make, the tough decisions that you have to make. So I just wanted to publicly recognize that, and we do appreciate all of your service. I've been honored today by some of these speakers. We are a first-rate destination marketing organization, shared the numbers with you. We've grown sales, we've grown booked room nights. In the six years that I've been here, by over 1,000%, we will book this. If we build this, they will come. I would just remind you that we are the nation's 36 largest city in the country, yet sadly, far too many people are familiar with it. And if people have heard of Mesa, they often confuse us with Alta Mesa, with Costa Mesa. And so you have a decision to make, is that something that's acceptable to you, or do you want to try to make a change to that? We can change that narrative with a complex like this, because you're bringing in 350,000 new visitors to Mesa each and every year, along with their $200 million in direct expenditures. And finally, I would just leave with you with the fact that, well, first, not only does this pay for itself, or all we're asking is for the residents to front the money, they get paid back over time. But finally, and this is appropriate for today, negative and bad news travels a whole heck of a lot faster than good news does. Let's build a project like this. Let's have a great story, a positive story shared about Mesa with people throughout the country and throughout the world. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Any other folks like to speak on this item? All right, thank you. Council.
Mayor?
Yes.
Would it be helpful for us to give a presentation on how we plan, kind of the structure of the Mesa Plays?
I did see we had a second PowerPoint presentation, so I wondered, and maybe I jumped the gun by having people speak, and maybe that was the plan all along for...
This makes it easier for Mike, so he can be the champion that carries it across the line here.
Thank you, Mike. I just pulled up your presentation, was about to start asking questions about it, so I'm glad you're here to answer them.
Great, I felt like you didn't want to hear me speak. Good morning, Mayor, council members. Today, I'd like to kind of present and review some of the facts and the cost and how we plan to finance this project. The first three slides, I'll skip over, we've seen those before. They kind of represent the split between the 24 fields, the nine fields for community, and the 15 fields for the tournament space. This next slide just reminds you of the Elliott Pollak study that was revised in March of this year. I've highlighted four of the direct impact of incremental revenue there that was mentioned by several of our citizens. So that, just remember, those are those numbers from the study.
Mike, can I ask a question?
Yes, sir.
First number, bed tax, obviously I get. So what Mr. Pollak is saying is that he anticipates that the bed tax will increase as a result of this project, that amount of money, correct?
That's correct. From primary impact, there's also secondary impact, you know, multipliers that I haven't included on this slide.
The sales tax question, is that, again, the anticipated additional restaurant sales, additional lodging?
Yep, it's everything. Lodging, additional restaurant, rental cars, all those.
Okay.
Be included there.
And that's based, how many ripples out are we looking? I mean, is this directly the visitors that will come to Mesa to play in these tournaments? It's X number of people, we anticipate they'll spend X number of dollars on hamburgers and beds while they're here?
Mayor, that's correct, that's correct. They've made several, or a lot of assumptions on how many people would, what percentage can they book the tournament fields? How many are gonna stay in hotels versus the local attendees? How much they're gonna spend on each, you know, rental car, meals, so on and so forth?
Okay, thank you. Yes, Jeremy.
This, this says the study's from 2018. I know that we've drastically changed this project. Are these numbers still accurate based on what we plan on building today?
Mayor, Councilmember Whitaker, those are the latest, the latest revision by Elliott Pollak. So I can't, I guess I can't answer whether that would change or not, they would have to look at that.
So if you recall, the first round, the, we had impact studies, but those sometimes included the impact of the fields and the field house. The numbers you see in front of you right now are only for the fields.
So these numbers have been adjusted to accommodate the parts of the projects that have been removed?
Yeah. What's been removed? The field house?
The field house, or whatever else?
Yeah, correct, correct, yeah.
When this study was done, what was the total capital outlay for this project versus what it is today?
It's, I think we're almost, I think we're right on the number as far as the, actually, this, so we're assuming 55 million between, for all the fields. I think that was, I mean, maybe Mark can help me out, but I think we're pretty closer. Who has, but no, for the Elliott Pollak study, what did we, what was assumed in here? 55 million, about as far as?
Roughly.
Yeah, but I think the way the study looked at is just the number of fields and the number of teams and the activity that it would bring to the area. I think that's the way I've read it. And so it's assuming if you have this many fields, then you can bring this many teams for a tournament, and that generates so many nights and hotel rooms and stays and restaurants and things like that.
So the field count is identical to when this?
Oh, yes, yeah, we have not changed, I'm sorry, thank you, yeah, we haven't changed the total number. What we've done is we've created, identified that, what's the number of community fields? Is it nine?
Nine.
Nine fields that are, we call them community fields, the 25 million. Those will be used and can be programmed by Mark Hirschberg and the City's Park and Recreation Department during the week. And so those 25, those nine fields, we associated about a $25 million cost. Those are included in the geo-bond list of projects. We've taken the other four... We've taken the other four, 15 fields that we call tournament fields, they're held for the tournaments that will be booked by Visit Mesa. And so they're really, they won't be available to the general public on a regular basis. And so they've been separated, and with the idea that those will be funded from the revenues that'll be induced by the activities at those fields.
Sure. I was just making sure we're comparing.
Yeah, no, that's fine. Good question. Thank you for that clarification.
Yeah, I'm sorry, Mr. Thompson.
I'm still back on, on the slides on two and three. So we're going to do nine fills for 25 million, and they're doing another 15 fills for 30 million. And so they're almost doubling what we're doing. More parking, more restrooms, more fields for $5 million more. So I guess I'm struggling with that cost. Is it because that it's natural turf versus artificial turf?
Correct. So that's upfront cost is part of that, yeah.
So it's more expensive to put in natural turf than artificial?
No.
Or the other way around?
The other way around.
It's more expensive to mow.
Well, because on the, on the tournament fields, there's 13 natural grass fields, and one natural grass championship, and one artificial turf, and then our nine are artificial turf.
Let's, Mr. Hirschberg can, can explain it, but we've run all these through by independent cost estimators to give us these estimates. But maybe explain that, why the distinction in the turf.
Yeah. Mayor, Councilmember Thompson, the nine community fields are all synthetic turf. Those fields are substantially more expensive upfront to put those in through, through that capital process, from what's required underneath the ground for proper drainage and settling, to the turf itself. Long-term savings and maintenance. The nine, we decided to do those nine community fields so that as we separated those out, those can be used for practices and that heavy use that happens Monday through Thursday, while those remaining fields can rest for the week to play, to be used for gameplay and tournament play on the weekends.
And that helps save costs on your operations?
Correct. Yep.
From the next slide, there's a slide, the estimated cost slide that shows a split, Mike? Yeah, there you go. That kind of gives you a sense of how we're looking at this.
Yeah, as Mr. Brady said, we split out the fields, the community fields, so the 25 million would be included in the general obligation bond package, and the 30 million would be funded through an excise tax bond with an estimated annual debt service of $2.4 million. The 2.6 on the bottom of this is the O and M for the entire 24 fields, as Mark had mentioned. Now, the final slide I wanted to go over today is kind of how we want to structure that. We've, we've looked at what Elliott Pollak has said, and we really wanted to have the, those that take part in the complex to pay for the capital cost. So you can see here, the community fields, the $2 million for the secondary property tax would be taken care of. Capital cost, the O and M, 2.6, we mentioned before in Scott's presentation. And I want to focus on the middle column, the $2.4 million. So in our discussions with Visit Mesa, we want to share the risk with Visit Mesa and have the tourists, the visitors, pay for that. And we're doing that by, the $1 million backstop by the City of Mesa would be paid for by concession and field rentals. If you remember the Elliott Pollak slide, that's about $700,000. And there's, and then the incremental sales tax would be to pay for the rest of that million dollars, the $300,000. And there's obviously a lot of, a big margin of safety between what Elliott Pollak said we would receive and the $300,000 that we're expecting to pay, to use to pay for the additional $300,000. Visit Mesa would backstop the $1.4 million. This would assume an increase in the bed tax of 1%. Now, let me just pause right here and just remind Council that if Council wants to go, continue on with this project, we would need the direction to refer an increase in bed tax of 1% to the ballot in November. And that would generate about $900,000 is what we're estimating today for that increase in bed tax rate. And the additional $500,000 would be taken care of by the incremental bed tax that would be generated by this complex. So that's all I had prepared, ready to answer any questions that you may have.
So Mayor and Council, again, we wanted to separate the community fields and those, like the other fields that we're proposing would be funded by a secondary property tax, but that the tournament fields, the ones that are being, that the community cannot use during the week, would be held and funded separately from the additional revenues coming from tourism. And so that's where the million dollars, that includes the field rentals, the concessions, and a portion of the sales tax. And then what's been very helpful here in the conversations, that Visit Mesa has agreed that $1.4 million of the $2.4 million to cover the tournament fields will be covered by a bed tax. And so that includes an additional increase in the bed tax, plus the induced new amount of bed tax that will be received by the city by bringing this activity here. It continues to create the partnership, the close partnership between the city and Visit Mesa, to drive and create the opportunities to bring tournaments to Mesa, because they're going to be on the hook in a significant way to, once those fields are built, to continue to bring activity to those fields, to help pay for the cost of those fields. So that was, that's where we are with this proposal in front of you today.
Thank you. Mr. Whitaker?
I have a few questions. The capital expenditure for the project, the debt service payment, is that included in the O and M cost, or where is that calculated for?
The debt service for the community fields would be paid for by the secondary property tax, and the, the capital cost here for the tournament fields would be taken care of by bed tax and the concession and field rentals.
But it'd be an excise sales tax?
Yeah, excise sales tax.
Reimbursed by these funds.
That's correct. So we'd issue the excise tax bond, and we had a debt service to pay.
So we issued excise taxes, correct me if wrong, to build the spring training facilities, but we're paying them back, not by the sales tax. We're paying it back by the sale of land. So we, we use the excise sales taxes, the...
You pledge the...
The device, the instrument through which we issued the, we pledged the debt, but we repay it from these other sources.
And the sales excise tax doesn't require voter approval?
No. State law does not require voter approval.
So this would not go to the voters?
No.
Well, Mayor, Councilmember, that's correct. The issuance of this 30 million doesn't, but because we're spending, there'll be actually two, three items on the ballot that will be required for approval from the voters in order for us to do that, to do this. The two specific to the tournament fields will be, first, an increase in approval by the voters for, to increase the bed tax by 1%. That has to become, that has to be approved. And the second is the 613 charter amendment, or not amendment, what's the right word?
Section.
Question.
Question. To allow the city to spend more than a million and a half dollars on this facility. And so they'll be voting specifically for Mesa Plays on those two items, which will be included as one of the questions on the ballot, or two of the questions, sorry, two of the questions on the ballot.
So this will be voted on by the voters?
Yes.
But not necessarily for the funding source, just, not on the debt?
Right, correct, but...
I'm just trying to understand.
No, 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 it's a fair question. So the reality, though, is if they don't approve the 613 or the bed tax, we don't issue the debt, the project doesn't move forward.
Okay. So essentially, this does lie in the hands of the voters?
That's what we're trying to get to that point, you know, without creating a separate question. This, I mean, these questions are there for, the community is going to have to vote for Mesa Plays. It's going to have to endorse Mesa Plays on two different items just for Mesa Plays, and really is a thumbs up or thumbs down for this initiative on those two questions.
Okay. And then the other question is for Jim. I know that it seems that a lot of the debt that we take out has to be approved by voters. Can you just remind me why sales excise tax is exempt from that, or why are we able to issue debt using sales excise tax but no other method?
It goes, Mayor, Councilmember Whitaker, it goes back to the fact that the other types of debt are required by state statute to go to the voters. Excise sales tax bonds are not. There's a group of cases a number of years ago involving the City of Phoenix, and the courts ultimately upheld the concept that you don't have to take excise sales tax to the voters. And I'll just say that's, you know, and since then, and we've talked to bond council, that's, you know, it's common throughout other cities, too. I mean, that's, it's a statewide, it's not unique to Maricopa County or this city.
No, I understand. It just, I'm just, it seems counterintuitive to me that the state government would require all other major forms of debt to be voted on by voters, but an excise tax is somehow exempt. I'm not questioning what it is.
No, no, I think, I think it's the full faith and pledge of the, the way the property taxes are pledged versus pledging excise taxes, which are, it's not the same thing as pledging onto someone's property tax that you can lean against. I think that's part of the, I don't know if it's the theory, to me, that's the print, that would, that's what gets me, you know, makes me think why there's a distinction of an excise tax versus a property tax vote. You know, utility, even utility bonds are, you know, couldn't, don't necessarily need to go to the voters.
Sure.
Thank you. Mr. Freeman?
Thank you for the presentation. You know, when this initially came to our table, I was really taken back by the costs initially with the fieldhouse and everything else. So I appreciate everybody working together and reducing the costs, and I guess carving out, separating what Mesa Plays needs and Visit Mesa. So for the record, I am supportive of it. I appreciate it, everything that's been discussed here this morning. I think this is a great opportunity for Mesa to grow in that specific area, and it'll just help facilitate many things that we're doing throughout the community. We have a piece of land that can only be, from what I understand, developed this way, and which is necessary that we move forward with that. So we, we just have to take our land, they're not making new land, obviously, and we've had this for how long, Mr. Brady?
Well, the land's probably been there since the beginning of time.
Probably.
But we, I think, I don't know how long...
But how long have we had that?
Early 70s, early 70s.
Early 70s, yeah.
So we're just a minor player, early 70s.
Yeah, we've only come on to it recently.
With that said, I appreciate that. I feel that this will be a great amenity for Mesa, and again, I support the project. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Luna?
Thank you for the presentation. He stole my thunder, because I was going to talk about the BLM land is only, can be used for recreational use, and so we're very fortunate that we have that land available. And certainly, I'm an advocate of, you know, sports and soccer, it's something that is very interesting to me, and I certainly am very supportive of this project, and the revenue it's going to bring to the City of Mesa. So I am going to be supporting this project as I move forward, and thank you so much. And thank you for working out the details relative to the private-public partnership. I think that was a little sticking point last time, and I think we got that issue resolved with the new proposal. So to me, it's very exciting for East Mesa, and I will be supporting this.
Thank you. Kudos to staff for coming up with the great idea, and I think specifically, Mr. Brady, the great idea of tying this to the bed tax. I think this does make a lot of sense for the users of this. It always seemed a little bit off for me for us to be doing an economic development project through, funding through a park bond, even though it arguably was a park. But what we've got now with the separation of the issues is we've got the folks that are coming in from out of town to use this facility, or the folks that are going to be paying for it with the increased bed tax. So, so that makes, that's just a lot cleaner to me, and I think we can go to the voters and explain that a lot more easily. So I think, actually, speaking specifically to Mesa Plays, the voters get three cracks at this, because the other essential part of this is we have to approve the 25, I mean, the, the public fields as well, in order to have the complex that's really going to have the synergy to attract the types of tournaments that we're looking for. So they have to say yes on that, they have to say yes on raising the tax on folks that come in from out of town and rent rooms, and then getting this past the charter question. So there will be plenty of opportunity for, for the public to weigh in on this project. And then I was, the next slide, Mike, that you had that we didn't look at is just the financing slide, slide nine. And to me, this kind of tells the whole story, because it, it goes through what the capital costs are for the community fields, what the capital costs are for the tournament fields, what the operation and maintenance is on both fields, where the money's coming from for this and that, and of course, they, what we've got now, that really the proposal in front of us is we're breaking even on building a very large park project that will be really a signature amenity for our community. And it's not often that you can break even on building a big, beautiful park project. Is that, is that fair to say?
Yeah, that's fair to say, and I just want to mention something I made on air, I saw on air today. That .7 from the field and concessions needs to move over to the middle column, just a small revision.
Okay. Well, I think it does tell the story, though, which is, now, I, I, Mr. Garcia would probably hit me if I said this was just a break-even project. This is going to make money for the city in that where there'll be new hotels constructed, there'll be new employment that will occur, there'll, there'll be an increase in property values, there'll be sales tax in addition to what's been calculated here. So there will be a net economic gain. It's not just a break-even, but if we can do a project like this, that we normally have to heavily subsidize and break even on it, that's, that's innovative, and that's, that's a great idea. So I, I, too, like my, my colleagues, I'm supportive of this, and I love the analogy that's been made earlier up to the Skyline Pool. Those of us who have been to the Skyline Pool, or the Keno Pool, or the Mesa, Junior Mesa High Pool, or the Carson Pool, or any of the pools, every time I go there, I'm struck by the huge amount of activity that is taking place in those pools. We literally are wearing the water out, if that's possible, between synchro and master swimming, and age group swimming, and master swimming, and all the tournaments that come in. I am, when I'm at those facilities, I am proud of Mesa, and I am proud of the investment that we've made. And everybody who comes there, whether they're Mesa residents or not, leave that facility very impressed with Mesa and the fact that we've invested in something that bears not just financial fruit, but also elevates the quality of life in our community in an amazing way. And this is going to be a project very much in that ilk. And so what we haven't talked about is the six fields that we have that are used just off the corner of this project, our current existing soccer facility. Every time I go there, I have the same impression. It is literally every blade of grass at that facility has got an eight-year-old running around on it. And it is just a wonderful amenity that, that elevates the quality of life of our, of our community. So I'm proud of the investments that we've made similar to this in the past. I think this is important for us to proceed on. Now, the question that's in front of us, though, is not limited to just the Mesa Plays project. We have to, I think what we're talking about doing is putting on our agenda for the July 2nd meeting, the, the big package that we've talked about, which is the Parks and Rec package. Mr. Brady, when, are we also voting on the second to put on the ballot the bed tax increase and the charter question?
Yes, you'll have, so we've already, we've already made the determination to put Home Rule, and, well, we'll actually do that on Monday, and then we'll have the public safety sales tax. So then after that, you'll have, help me out, Dan.
The public safety bonds?
Bonds.
The Parks and Cultural Bonds?
Parks and Cultural Bonds.
613 question, and then the bed tax.
Okay, so that's several questions. They're all related to one another, or not, not necessarily. The public safety, sales tax, public safety bonds are voted on separately, but, and obviously the bed tax increase, the charter question, they're, they're voted on separately.
Correct.
But, and, but the park bond that we discussed earlier that has all the fields, not just Mesa Plays, so that'll be on our agenda for July the 2nd. So there still is some time for community feedback to come to council for and against these projects. I'll be listening to the input that I get, but like I said, I don't mean to hold anyone in suspense. I absolutely, strongly support what's been presented to us today, and intend on being an advocate and campaigning for it, and raising money for these campaigns, and doing everything I can to help them be successful.
Yeah, so Mayor, I think we will bring the package to you on the 28th of June in your Thursday study session, where you'll review the items for July 2nd. So we'll, I think Mr. Freeman will work with him on the pathways and the pedestrian crossings, because I know he still has one more project in a basin that a neighborhood really would like to see done, and so maybe we can, we can adjust some things to get that basin taken care of with savings out of that project. So we'll see what we can do on that. But other than that, I think we're planning on moving forward with all the projects you have in front of you as of today.
Okay. Council, so this is, the agenda is just expressing a direction to, to staff? Is there, are we in, is there a consensus that that's the direction we want to go? Mr. Whitaker?
Before we move forward. On that slide nine, can you bring that back up? It's all the way at the end. It's all the way at the end. So I'm trying to understand how this Excel document is broken out. So if I'm understanding correctly, the first two columns of $2 million and $2.4 million, those are the capital costs to actually build each project respectively. Is that correct?
Correct, yeah.
Debt service?
Debt service, yeah.
Anticipated debt service?
Yeah.
Including interest or just the principal?
Including interest.
Including interest. Okay, so the $2 million and the $2.4, the total project cost is 4.4 million a year. It's assumed $88 million over a 20-year bond, including principal and interest.
That's correct.
And the third column goes into the operations and maintenance, which is assumed $2.6 million a year. Where is the, where is the debt service payment calculated in this document?
So the debt service payment, we calculated based on the project cost of the 55 million, assuming a 5% return over 20 years.
Okay.
So it's behind the scenes, it's not in this document, but we just have a standard calculation that we estimate the debt service.
So at the very bottom, where it says estimated annual revenue, the first two numbers are debt service for the community fields and then debt service for the tournament fields. And then we included an estimated annual O and M for a total of $7 million. So that includes debt service and O and M on an annual basis of $7 million.
I understand now. The other question that I have, I didn't really clarify on the artificial turf versus the grass. The fields that are being built for the community fields, are all the tournament fields artificial and all the community fields are the grass fields? Am I understanding that correctly?
Mayor, Councilmember Whitaker, the community fields, the nine synthetic fields are all synthetic. The, one of the 15 fields, the championship field, one championship field is synthetic turf within the Mesa Plays.
Okay. And what's the, I know that regular turf, you know, obviously requires more O and M from paying labor costs to mow it and other things associated. How many years is the ROI on the artificial turf? And does it make more sense to build the entire project using artificial turf? Does it actually pay for itself in a certain amount of years where it would be better from a cost perspective to actually make that investment upfront?
So the question more becomes about playability and the use experience of what these, some of these user groups request, and not all, the majority of the soccer groups in particular would rather play, they're okay with some artificial turf, but would rather play on natural grass. I forget the, I believe the ROI is about eight years, but the life expectancy of the turf is 10 years. So one of the things we've built into the O and M cost is a reserve fund so that we have enough accumulated to start replacing those fields as they start to wear out as well.
Excellent. And the O and M column, I'm assuming that includes all capital depreciation that's necessary to keep these going in perpetuity? There's no future bond that we're going to have to issue in order to pay for some form of an upgrade or to replace something that exists within this project?
No, we've tried to include that all in, within the reserve fund in trying to move forward.
Do you have depreciated costs for replacing the turf?
That's part of...
And the infrastructure?
I believe that's what we've included in the, in the reserve fund early on. Well, we can double check, though.
We don't usually do that, so I'll take a look at that.
Okay. Thank you, guys. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Chris?
And I just want to echo my colleague's comments, and I want to thank staff for the presentation. I believe that all of the bonds, at least for parks and cultural, represent every part of Mesa. There's at least projects that spread the whole gamut. I also want to thank Visit Mesa for their project of Mesa Plays. I think that this will be a great amenity and asset to our community, and I support referring 613 and the bed tax to the ballot as well.
Thank you. So I think it's pretty clear the consensus is to put this on the agenda for the June 28th and the 2nd of July?
Correct.
Is that fair to say, council? Okay. Thank you very much, and congratulations to everyone. I know this has been a project that has been in various stages for years, and a lot of passion, a lot of efforts got into having it evolve to where it is now, and I'm comfortable that it has evolved to where it needs to be. I think this is really a great story of how we took a good idea and worked it really hard and value engineered it and scratched our heads a lot and came up with a better proposal. So thank you for, everyone who's worked so hard on this. The next item on our agenda is item three. That's to acknowledge receipt of minutes of boards and committees. Thank you. A motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Next item is to hear reports on meetings and conferences attended. Council, anything you'd like to share with us? Hearing none. Mr. Brady, can you tell us what the schedule of future meetings?
Sure. Mayor and council, we will have a study session and council meeting on Monday, June 18th. We'll begin at 5:00 PM. We have a few items to review with you in that study session along with the agenda. And then just a reminder, take your father to the pool. The pools are open this Sunday from 1:00 to 5:00 PM. Thank you.
Okay. So we, for our next, for our meeting on Monday, I think a couple of our council are going to be appearing telephonically, right? And so again, just a reminder to folks that we're having a special council meeting prior to the regular council meeting on Monday, and because of some state requirements, we're going to make a special effort to include people telephonically so we can get that vote in.
Yeah, some of us are in different time zones. We want to help them out.
Yeah.
Yes.
All right. Great. If there's nothing else, there's a motion to adjourn this meeting. All in favor, please say aye. Aye, we are adjourned.